Questions or comments can be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slosire@buxportmain.gov or during the meeting by calling 469-7368. Call or call Jake?
Councilor Reese.
Here.
Councilor Morrison.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Missina.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilor Armstrong.
Here.
Councilor Downs.
Here.
Town Council minutes from 7:14, 2022. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is receive and review correspondence, two Verona Police Calls, one on July 11th, 2022, and one on July 16th, 2022. Next, our ordinances to introduce. We have second readings. We will have a public hearing a little bit later during the public hearing section. First is the second reading of Chapter Two, Section 14, Employee Benefits. Second is the second reading Fee Ordinance, Adding Electrical Vehicle Charger Fees. And second reading Changes to Appendix K Land Use Ordinance. Any questions on those, or we'll save those for our public hearing? Discussion items? See any discussion items? I don't see any. Alright. Resolve 2023-09 to approve the sewer commitment for April 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2022. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is Resolve 2023-10 to approve up to $1,500 for transportation costs for skateboard ramp. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Do we have a presentation?
We have a, I believe we have a presentation that...
No, you're not.
Cole, thank you very much. We'll struggle through that. Sorry, everybody. There we go. Not sure why it's blinking, but... Alright, so, the resolve, $1,500 for the transportation of the ramp? Oh, of course it's... There we go. Alright, so, I'm Derek Cole.
Jamie Gendel.
And we're here with Skate Buxport, and we are asking the council to consider the approval of the resolve to pay at the ramp here. And also, we're asking that the council understands that we will also be seeking approval in the future for a site for the ramp, as well as expansion of a skate park. We hope to illustrate the value of this unique opportunity presented to Buxport. A little bit about the ramp. It's a six-foot-high-by-16-foot-wide mini-ramp or half-pipe. I'm just gonna blast through this. I apologize for that. So, this was built in 2016 by Skidmark Parks, and it spent four years in Rye Airfield Skate Park, and has spent the last two years in storage. And at this point, it has an estimated life expectancy of another 20 to 25 years of use. And at the time of construction in 2016, was roughly between $20,000 to $25,000. We received a quote yesterday from American Ramp Company for a comparable ramp, and the price tag to have them come out and build the same thing is gonna be $70,000. A little bit about Skidmark Parks. Their CEO and head builder is a person named John Saxton. He's world-renowned. He's best-known clients is Red Bull Energy Drinks, Rye Airfield, of course, Highland Mountain Bike Park, and Camp Woodward. And here are some examples of his work that they decided to show. This is a project he did for Red Bull Energy Drinks. This is a photograph of Rye Airfield. This is actually an undisclosed location of private skate park that someone had him build, and I wish it was shown, because it's beautiful. At this point, Jamie, if you want to just talk a little bit about the ramp assembly?
So, ramp comes in three different pieces, I believe in six-foot sections, so that can be put together either by a professional company or by myself. Ramp will be assembled on top of a concrete foundation or timber foundation, but that will kind of be that conversation with you guys about location, where it's gonna be, town site, and what we want to do with that site, whether it's repave or just putting on pre-existing structure.
Just real quick, Derek, can we just turn that blinking is on the camera?
Yep, okay.
And then turn that on the table, if you could email that to Sue?
Yep.
And then she can send it to us?
Okay, yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Well, then I'll just read through the facts then. So, as you started to say, you know, disassembly, it was designed by Skidmark Parks to be a ramp that can be taken apart and put back together, and they did all the hard work. At this point, assembly and disassembly can be done by an experienced carpenter with or without ramp building experience. And also, the, one of the things that we do want to mention, I'm happy to have in the room Bo Lambert with First Push Syndicate, and First Push is gonna be the donor of this ramp, and they would like to, if this proceeds, enter into an agreement with the town of Buxport, in which they would receive right of first refusal if, for whatever reason, the ramp doesn't get used, or down the road, we do decide to move on and build a different skate park, and it's time to get rid of that ramp. The main goal behind that is just that they want to see this ramp in use somewhere in Maine in a community. And additionally, if this all does go forward, First Push does look forward to working with the town, as well as the school system, to provide some educational programming to children centered around skateboarding and biking. And as far as storage needs, we would need an approximately, a footprint of approximately 16 feet by 16 feet. When we do store them, they can be stacked on top of one another, and if left outside, just some sort of cover or shrink wrapping, is what you mentioned.
I can do shrink wrapping, no problem. That would be the best storage procedure.
And transportation, the ramp is currently stored in a tow yards facility, Chandler Towing. They're based out of Sanford, Maine, and their yard is in North Berwick, and they just happen to have really good rates. All of this can be put onto the back of one flatbed, and they would charge $150 an hour, and it just so happens to be a 10-hour round trip, and that hourly estimate does include the time to load and unload. And again, at $150 an hour, we'd be at $1,500. That just worked out. And again, coming up from North Berwick, the, just some minor details as far as unloading is concerned, according to where it's going, and where it's gonna be stored temporarily, it would be great if we could figure something out, maybe with the municipality, to just find a way to get a forklift to remove it and put it where it's going. But further discussion, of course. The ramp, again, must be taken and delivered by Labor Day, September 5th of this year. And with that being said, I hate to say this, summer is, you know, we're almost in August, so we would just need to make some plans with Chandler's ASAP. And do you have anything else that we should bring up?
Beyond that, it would be future conversations about, you know, expansion of this if we go forward, and also just us raising money on our side of things, you know, to help towards the whole of all things. So beyond that, it's just questions and concerns from you guys.
Any questions? Yeah, exactly. Could you, oh, sorry, Jim, I'm just gonna say, you make sure, could you email that to Sue?
Yeah, I'll email that off dead away.
You said that they charge $150 an hour.
Yep.
Am I correct?
Yep.
And you're asking for how much? $15,000?
$1,500.
$1,500.
If I said $15,000, I apologize. I've been doing that when I've been practicing, so. And that $150 an hour, it actually is, I think, like $125 an hour plus an 18% fuel charge, so it's technically $1,4750. But, you know, for this case...
$1,500.
Yep. And again, that 10-hour estimate does include load, unload, and drive time.
And you said that it would be, what, $200,000 if you were going to build this right now?
No. So, grant-wise, it's like up to $200,000, $300,000. That would be more so what kind of park we would pick, the items that we would put on it, the pavement we would put on it, the structure.
Okay, well, the statement was that it would cost $200,000 to build one?
Seventy, $70,000.
$70,000?
Yep, that was a quote that we received yesterday from American Ramp Company. They are, you know, one of the larger building, park-building companies out there. They work a lot with municipalities. I went to them. I didn't get any other bids for this circumstance, just because I have done some investigating, and they do really well.
And that's not even for a skate park, that's just solely for the specific ramp.
Just the ramp.
What will our role be when this is all in motion?
If the ramp gets here, is that the question?
What will our role as town be?
Well, as a town, we're asking...
Are we gonna be the owners of the thing, or...
Yes.
You know, you're about three steps ahead of us right now.
No, well, what we're asking for from the town is for a skate park. I mean, for a site for the skate park, for the ramps of the skate park, we will obviously fundraise whatever we can to help that, but most of the time, the town takes responsibility for a skate park, because it's what the kids deserve. You know, I think all, the kids that don't do traditional sports should have a location to practice and hone these skills, biking, you know, BMX and skateboarding, scooter and whatever it may be. So, yeah, that is, it is on the town. And we'll help any way we can.
And Councilor Morrison, I do have to speak to what you just said. I think you said something about us being steps ahead. We are, this is a super unique scenario. Usually, an initiative to do a skate park in a town will start, it'll fail, it'll start again in five years, it'll fail, it'll start again, until eventually, it's done the right way, and it catches on, and it works. This is super unique, because we're being donated a self-sustained ramp that, I don't want Buxport to do this, but you could plop it down in a field, on some timbers or on some concrete blocks, and you'd have a self-sustained ramp, ready to skate.
And it'd be a start.
It'd be a start.
Make kids happy.
That's not what we're asking for. We're asking to get this huge donation, which is kind of the heart of a skate park, and typically, when you look at skate park designs, like that were in our initial proposal, you'll see the half-pipe. That's a big piece, and then things are built off of that. So, you know, we've got quite the opportunity here.
Was, sorry, were you, I'll set, Jim?
Yeah.
Were there other pieces to the skate park that they were giving away, or was that the only one?
That's kind of up in the air, in the sense that if there is room after it's loaded, and there happens to be some extra pieces that might be available, then the discussion was, we'll let you know. But there's nothing like pen and ink about that. Ink and paper, whatever the saying is.
I was at my school the other day, and there were probably four kids out in the parking lot skateboarding, and I went over and I asked them, I said, you know, we're talking about putting in a skate park in Buxport, would you travel?
Yeah.
And skate? And they were, absolutely, yeah, we'd love to have a place closer to where we are, so...
It's our goal.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the community that it will foster. I don't see, I don't see this person here, but an acquaintance of mine from years ago randomly heard about this, that was going, what was going on here, and he was like, "Oh, yeah, like, I'm actually part of a nonprofit called the Maine Skateboarding Association." And, you know, he lives in Bangor, I know that's not super far, but, I mean, he was like, "I hope it happens, I can't wait to ride that ramp. I had a blast riding it in New Hampshire years ago." So, yeah, you're gonna have people going from community to community when things like these pop up.
Any other questions? Sue?
We're kind of in the details now, and I had suggested to Mayor Stewart earlier when we were talking about how that if you approve the transport of the ramp, that the next step would be to schedule an infrastructure meeting where you can really get into the details of where this might best and come back to the council, bring it back to the council with their infrastructure recommendation, the location, and whatever else goes along with this, so that it can, if this approval is tonight, that it can move along.
Yeah.
So.
Great.
And the only other thing we need from you is just when we start fundraising, just a bank account for the town to be able to put that money in, because we do plan on doing that, so.
The town is the fiscal, because the town would be the owner and responsible party, it's the fiscal agent for anything. If you become a 501(c)(3) and are doing things on your own, then we can't be your fiscal agent. But if you're a group of people who are supporting an activity and helping to move this along, the town maintains an account with whatever donations.
Okay, great.
Come in for the purpose.
Great. Awesome. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Alright, thanks.
Really quick question before I go. Well, you mentioned bikes, are bikes gonna be allowed on this? We just want to make sure that there's proper signage saying, ah, this is designed simply for skateboards only, or skateboards...
Hey, Rich, let's take that up at the infrastructure when we decide if we're gonna do something. This is just for transportation of the ramp.
Okay.
Thank you. That's a, weasels, once you figure out what.
Okay.
Yep. So, we got a motion of second to approve up to $1,500 for transportation costs for a donated skateboard ramp. How would the council like to proceed? Oh, we got a motion of second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections? We have none. Approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds. State of Darryl Howard, map 033, lots five and six. Quit claim to Robin McCarthy and Elias Haynes. Tax lien 61919, 63020, 61521, account 01421. Sewer liens 32321, 92821, 32322, account 93. Sewer liens 3192018, 9262018, 3192019, three, uh, check, 9262019, 3262020, 9282020, 3232021, 928202021, 3232022, account 90. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Town mayor should report.
Good evening. Our poll numbers updated since our last meeting. RSU 25 towns, participants, 3,962. Non-RSU 25, not 24, towns, 307. Total overall guests, 4,269. 92.8% of pool patrons come from RSU 25 communities, with an average number of guests per day of 129. So, we're still doing well numbers-wise. Our PPI planning grant for MDOT, the proposals closed for that yesterday. We received one proposal. It will be reviewed by MDOT, and if it meets all the requirements, it will be on your agenda on August 11th for review and approval. Wardwell Construction will begin the Jacob Buck Pond Road Culvert Project on Monday, August 15th. The Bux Mills Culvert Project will not be done until the spring of 2023 due to the availability of the culvert before the installation deadline of September 30th, which is set by DEP. The Jacob Buck Pond Road will be closed from the Millvale intersection to the culvert just before Willis Road for an estimated three weeks. There will be signage and barricades, and the project engineer will be discussing this with public safety to ensure their emergency services and ditch the dispatch plan for rerouting emergency traffic when necessary. Wednesdays on Main will be hosting a food event on Wednesday, August 3rd, with Guns and Hoses and Garden Club pies. A message on the Public Safety Facebook page read that our Public Safety Community Program, Guns and Hoses, is back at it with the burger and dogs business, and we hope to see you for dinner next Wednesday. After a break during recent times, our dedicated public safety professionals of police, fire, and EMS want to get back out and meet our community members. Ring your wallet, stroll Main Street, and enjoy a Buxport famous Red Line or Blue Line signature burger, chips, drinks, and more. That is from 5:30 to 7:00 on Wednesday, August 3rd, on Main Street in front of Bayside Beauty and Fellows Key in Tomosco offices. Guns and Hoses will also be on hand for town employee lunch from 11:30 to 1:00, next to the town office, on Monday, August 8th. The town office and other town departments will still be open for business, but employees will have an opportunity to run out and get lunch from the Guns and Hoses crew. And finally, the in-town paving, part of our project, Broadway, Franklin, and the in-town streets, the shim work will start on those roads next week, which has to be done so that public works can do adjustments to sewer manholes and other things like that before the final paving is done. And the Silver Lake reclaim grade pave project will be done before the end of September, before September 30th of this year. That's my...
Will Broadway be done before school starts?
Yes, the shim and stuff, that includes Broadway, but the final paving on those roads will be done before school starts. I'll have to lock my office if it isn't.
Alright, any questions? Thanks, Sue. Next, we have public hearings. First is a public hearing, Chapter Two, Section 14, Employee Benefits. Open the public hearing. Any questions? Comments? Questions? Close the public hearing. Can we enact these now, Jacob? Jacob? Do we have to enact these now? Right? Right? How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'll have a public hearing on Fee Ordinance, Adding Electrical Vehicle Charges. Open the public hearing for that. Questions? Kathy?
I have a question. I know we're in need of these, however, I'd really hate to see two spaces on the waterfront used. What are the chances that we couldn't put it in the new parking lot right behind the community pharmacy up here? There's a toll and call, I checked it out, I've had other people mention that to me, instead of taking two parking places on the waterfront? Because nobody's gonna be able to park in those places at any time. They're gonna be just forgotten.
Is there a power issue?
No power there. No power was put in that parking lot when it was constructed. No handicap parking spot, that parking lot is not able to have it. We walked around with the folks, and the options were Veterans Memorial. What I meant with the folks for the location, the options were here, but there's no power down at the Veterans Memorial with less parking, or down at the town dock, which had the most parking available. That's more in the center of the town, and when you have those in a location like that, it's closer to the businesses, that'll get the folks to get out and walk to, wherever they are, they're gonna have to walk to a business or walk somewhere to spend their time, but we have the power right from the red building, which is where we put the two parking spots, right in front of that building right there.
It's just sad to have two parking places away.
Well, I agree.
Nobody can park there. I think it would have been better down at the Veterans Memorial, even though there's less parking down there, but, I mean, people just park there, they walk. But, that's just...
There's nothing saying that these have to stay there forever. That can be arranged and changed. All we're talking about tonight is the fee for what we're gonna charge for using them, but placement.
I just have people asking about the placement.
Again, taken.
For instance, if we ever got power at that parking lot, then we could...
That would be the perfect place.
We could change it, move on.
Any other questions?
You're still happy with the, the... Yes. So forth.
Anything else? Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Oh, we already approved it by having the public hearing. Motion approved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, public hearing on Changes to Appendix K Land Use Ordinance. Open the public hearing. Comments or questions?
I have a few questions. Is this going to be allowed anywhere in the outskirts, in my understanding? Facilities?
You're specifically addressing marijuana. So, only cultivation would be allowed in the Rural One Zone. Rural Two Zones are the more rural areas.
Could you define what those acronyms mean? Nothing to me.
Yep.
Could you put street addresses or locations or something?
Yep, so, Rural Two is gonna be areas out like Strickland Ridge Road, areas that are not right off the beaten path, that they're out the backside of Long Pond. Trying to think, I don't know, you'd have to look at the zoning map, but...
Rural Ones.
Rural One is all the roads, you know, like Jacob Buck Pond Road, Bux Mills Road, Church Road, whatever, those are all in Rural One. Yes.
So, they've built any size, built in...
Yeah, no different than any other barn or whatever. I mean, it would have to get approved by the planning board, but yes.
It's classified as a farm.
Yes. Yeah.
But all cultivation has to be inside?
It all has to be inside buildings. That is the one difference between that. That is the one difference between that and tomatoes or whatnot, but other than that, yes, it's only cultivation. It's not processing, manufacturing, selling, none of that stuff, only growing.
Paul, to answer your question, R-two is basically anything north of forty-six, heading out forty-six, north of, looks like Bucksmills Road. So, you've got Cobb Hill section, Jacob Buck section, Orchid Mountain section, Bucksmills section, Moosehorn Stream section, Long Pond section. So, basically, anything from north of the Broadway, almost, is what it seems like here. That's pretty accurate.
Well, yeah. Like, it's usually typically, it's about a thousand feet from the road before you get into the Rural Two, so.
And a lot of those places don't even have power.
No, correct. Yeah, most of those places are Rural Two. The big difference between Rural One and Rural Two is Rural Two, you have to have a minimum of four acres to build. It's harder to get to, so they wanted to do that to prevent subdivisions and things like that from getting put out there because it would be a burden on the fire department, police department, infrastructure, that kind of thing, to get out to Rural Two. So, Rural Two is four acres and bigger restrictions on building and stuff. You could still do it, obviously, but it's, whereas R-one is one acre minimum and less setbacks and that kind of thing. Yeah.
But power and water are both large requirements for these, so, and that all would be reviewed as part of the planning board process, correct? To ensure that there was sufficient of that to allow for the safe operation without the impact to somebody else's well next door or.
We have a funny taste in our well at Bucksmills Road. How about that? Yeah, I have some questions.
Yeah, come on up.
Yes.
Come on up.
I have to rewind the tape. First off, Bucksmills Road. So, Bucksmills Road's getting my attention to begin with, okay?
And that's all in the R-one, just so you know? That's not in the R-two?
I know, but let's really back things up, okay? When the election took place in November of 2015, the state narrowly said, okay, we're going to go forward with this. It passed by a minimum amount. That's not my words, that was the words of the Bangor Daily News. Then after that, in the beginning of 2016, came before the council, and there was a lot of discussion about it and so forth. But during the election, the town of Bucksport had voted no to putting any kind of marijuana of the five different categories here in the town, okay? We continued along that line, and part of the bill that got passed eventually said that home rule would apply, that the individual towns municipalities could make their own decisions, and it might take weeks, months, or here we are, almost six years from when the ordinance was passed, saying no, to everything.
And that's not correct.
Pardon?
That's not correct. We need, our current ordinance already allows marijuana sales in the park, and it has some development.
Retail cultivators, processed manufacturers, retail sales, retail testing labs, and retail social clubs, those were the five categories. I was on council at that time, I wrote this. I'm just saying, we'll go back and look at it, but this is my opinion.
I have gone back and looked at it.
Okay, my opinion.
Okay.
I disagree. In any event, there was a moratorium declared back then, there was discussion back and forth. When we had public meetings, no one, absolutely no one in the town came forward and stood up and said, yes, I want to go forward with the marijuana, okay? In fact, we'll just leave it at that, okay? So, then, I'll get to the bottom of this. There is no revenue to be generated, there's a special tax, there's a sales tax and a special tax applied to the sale of marijuana. Or, in any event, no revenue is generated directly to the town of Bucksport. It goes up to the states, it's puddles of money that go here, puddles of money that go there, and the money that's left over goes into the general fund, and that's how it works. So, again, here we are, six years later, now this has come back up again, and I think at this point, I'd like to suggest that you let the people in town make a decision what they want to do. We have an election coming up in November, put it on the ballot as a non-binding referendum, and let the people speak, and if you want to go forward after that, so be it. But we've been running for six years, and now all of a sudden, it's, maybe it's time for a change, I don't know. But, anyway, those are my two cents. Thank you for listening, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I would just say that the current ordinance does allow marijuana sales, medical marijuana sales in the town of Bucksport. As you know, I came to you folks about that about six months ago and asked if that was correctly in the ordinance, or if that was a mistake, and it was found to be correctly in there, and you all said that you supported expanding that use. And as far as the money, while that is an absolutely true statement, that we don't get anything from that, we don't get anything from alcohol sales, or Pepsi sales, or Frito sales, or any of that. The state gets tax revenue, but we don't get sales tax or anything on any product, so this is no different than any other product. I personally have never smoked the stuff, and I have no interest in it, but I'm just doing my job and, you know. And another thing I would say is that we've had multiple discussions here, we've had multiple planning board meetings, we've had public hearings at the planning board, and nobody from the public has commented or had anything to say at any of them until tonight.
But, any business is, we're basically just business tax.
Yeah.
Because all the towns.
You'll get revenue off the infrastructure that they build, and, you know, that kind of thing, property, personal property tax and real estate tax, but, yeah, it's no different than.
Any store.
Than Hanaford or Tozer's or whatever. We don't make anything off of what they sell. Yes, ma'am?
It was my understanding from looking over what the planning board had done and looking at this, was that the inside, requiring it to be inside and require ventilation systems and fire protection standards and all those things was the most restrictive way to permit this.
Correct.
That there was, because otherwise, there were, it was more risk and could be more offensive, shall we say, to a neighbor.
Yes.
If those things were not considered, and it was my understanding that when the planning board looked at this, that those were some of the considerations.
Those were our primary concerns, correct. It was odor control and security, and so we wrote a bundle of regulation into the ordinance saying what they have to do. They have to be notified if I can smell the marijuana at the property line, and if they don't correct it within seven days, they can be fined up to ten thousand dollars. So, I mean, it's, that's some serious teeth to make sure that they're following their odor control plan that they have to file in order to get a permit.
Yep. Is that the same odor control plan they have for that seafood place out there in the industrial park?
No. Unfortunately, they don't have an odor control plan.
I followed them from.
They were supposed to, but they never did.
I followed that chart from Crosby's, and as far as.
Hair to.
Friends.
Yeah.
And you couldn't even breathe.
Dump the truck.
Yeah. Right through the middle of town.
Even with that, there's nothing I can do to regulate trucks, so.
But that's an order that's.
Yeah, that's a rotten seafood, I mean, yeah, it's gross.
Well, I, yeah. To me, there's a difference between where I was coming from is medicinal marijuana, I understand. Somebody wanting to come in and buy an ounce or two, that's totally different to me, so.
You mean adult use versus medical use?
Pardon?
You mean adult use versus medical use?
Yeah, yes, that's a good way to put it, but the other thing that strikes me is, if we have a facility over here in Verona, we have a, I've never seen the one out in Orland, you can go to Brewer, they have multiple facilities up in Bangor for the sale. I understand, I'm really concerned about the cultivation, the odor, you know, but I read through the documents, you talk about you can't do it down here because of the safe zone, you can't do it up on this road because of whatever requirements, and it's, there are going to be shady customers, guys out there, that are going to try and sneak through and do this, and put a furnace in there and not exhaust the hot air to outside and keep the CO running inside to knock down the odor, and it's.
You can do that now?
Huh?
You can do that now?
I know, and we've had two fires that are under investigation right now in the past year. So, I'm done selling. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
I am starting to realize, I own Green Island Herb with my wife Erica over on Verona, so, just wanted to bring up a couple of things that I heard. As far as the town not getting anything, just so the town's aware, the state does offer up to twenty thousand dollars reimbursement for opting in. So, if it's taken any resources, time, money, loops time, you can apply to the state and they will reimburse up to twenty thousand dollars for any time and effort, you know, if you need to talk to the emergency service responders for anything, consulting, all that time should be tracked, and the town can reimburse some of that, just for that. You know, as far as also not getting anything, one thing that access to adult use or medical does is it limits the black market. The black market doesn't help anybody. It doesn't help the state, certainly doesn't help the towns that it's happening in. There's a danger for the consumer, there's no oversight, there's no awareness. So, that's going to happen unless people have access, safe access, to it. So, I think you have to keep in mind that every time that, you know, so we see it firsthand. So, we still have, despite all of our medical signs, there's still two or three people knock on the door, do you do adult use sales? Where do we send them? We send them to Bangor. So, you have a tremendous amount of traffic that is bypassing Bucksport, and they're going to go get it, or they're potentially going to try and contact somebody and make an illicit sale in town in the gray market, or the black market, whatever you want to call it, the non-tax, non-regulated market. So, should be aware of that. And so, you know, I think that there are tremendous things, like was brought up, Fritos aren't taxed, directly given to the municipality, but every store that's selling Fritos is jobs, every store, you know, it's maintaining buildings that might not otherwise be maintained, upgraded, improved, things like that. I've read through the proposed rules, I think that having odor ordinances and having some sort of say and control on that, that those concerns about affecting neighbors are going to be limited, and there'll be oversight, because you'll know exactly where the grows are, they're not going to be illegal grows in the back forty, because there's less reason for those grows to be operating, because there's legal access for people. You have a lot of people that can't drive to Bangor, there's some people that don't want to spend the money or have the doctor's appointment to get a medical card. Those people deserve access, they shouldn't have to figure out how to get to Bangor to do that, or, like I said, to use the illicit market. So, that's.
Can you speak to crimes, there are crimes within the industry, on any level that is concerning?
So, the state runs two very separate programs. So, you have the medical program, you have the adult use program. If, the medical program does not have certain safeguards in it that the adult use program has. So, there's track and trace is what the state calls it. That means that the state has twenty-four hour access to a portal, and any activity that happens in the adult use, sales, cultivation, has to be uploaded within twenty-four hours. The state has a window into every licensed business in real time, exactly the inventory, exactly what's, number of plants growing. So, it's called track and trace from seed to sale. Medical doesn't have that requirement. They've pushed back, and so it's a little looser. So, there has been some high-profile medical operations that have been operating outside of the law. And so, from a safety standpoint, I heard an argument that medical is arguably better. From a regulatory standpoint, there's more oversight in the adult use, you know, which is good, because adult use grows can be larger, you could have multiple stores in adult use, so the room for, I think they call it diversion into the gray market, the black market, is greater, so they want greater regulation, greater oversight from the state in those businesses. I don't know if that answered your question. As far as other crime, I think, you know, there's delivery services that are happening in Portland, I think it's a risk for delivery services of any, whether you're door dashing or whether you're delivering marijuana, you're going to an unknown location and meeting a stranger in a parking lot, or going to their home. So, I think inherently there has been some issues with that, and that's a concern, but yeah.
Okay.
We have not had any crime at our business, we have never had the police call, we have never had any incidents, we have, it's been very quiet, and I think a lot of the fears that people had have been alleviated just from how we run our business. So, it can be done professionally and safely.
Jordan, are you interested in putting a business here in Bucksport? Is that why you're here to talk to us?
We are. So, I had spoke at the planning board meeting, and I said that we have looked at Bucksport, and we would like to have an adult use retail store if the town was open. We don't want to push upstream against the wishes of the town, so we were hoping that the town was open for business, and they wanted to see that progress, so, you know, so we would like to relocate and add a second business, adult use specifically, and we certainly would look at cultivation options in the adult use program as well, so.
Can you just speak to how many jobs potentially that could be?
Yep. So, if we were looking at a model that we have good history on, you know, we maintain six full-time jobs outside of Erica and myself, year-round, and so our business is able to sustain on that. Sometimes seasonally, we might add part-time to that, but it's been pretty steady at six additional people. Any retail store would require at least that kind of base minimum number to maintain, stay open, and service it. If there was cultivation facilities, that would certainly be a four to six, depending on the scale, just to serve a single, so you're looking at close to a dozen jobs for a small vertically integrated operation in town.
How often at this point do you get inspected by the state?
So, we're inspected annually, so we have to keep our records. So, in the medical program, it's basically an annual inspection. If there's ever a report or a complaint, then they're required to come out and follow up, so we, fortunately, that doesn't happen, we haven't had complaints to the state, and so we have our annual inspection, and unless there was something amiss, then they would be prompted to come out and do an inspection based on something else they needed to. The adult use is, like I said, they have more access, there's more requirements, and the inspections are more often, so there is greater oversight in the adult use.
George, what do the, because I don't know the answer to this, that's why I'm asking the question. When you have employees, what sort of background checks or any other, I probably shouldn't phrase it this way, but what other hoops do you have to jump through in terms of when you have employees working there?
Yeah. So, I can speak with more. So I can speak with more authority from the medical standpoint, and they just recently changed this, but every employee has to be background checked. So this is a tremendous burden because it can take up to six weeks, even eight weeks we've been waiting, where someone comes in, applies for a job, they have to have their information sent to the state and we wait for the okay. So they do a background check to make sure that they don't have a criminal history or anything else that would keep them from doing that. And that would only allow them to work under one registered caregiver. So that's why I'm registered as a caregiver and that's what they call us working in the medical field. They've just switched over to it's more of a authorized card, so you can work for other various caregivers, and I believe that's how the adult use works as well, so, which is great for potential job market because you're not just locked into one person. If it's a seasonal trimming, you can go and solicit and say, hey, I've got my car and I'm ready, and you can go work for somebody else. So I believe that the flexibility the state has is it's an annual background check that allows you to work for caregivers in the medical field, or if you get the certification. I don't know if it's dual at this point, because we haven't had to see if one background check serves both programs, but yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jordan. Any other questions on changes to Appendix K, the land use ordinance? Sir?
At this point, the restaurants and taverns?
Yep, it's all part of it.
John Daniels on 19 U.S. Route 1, also 121 U.S. Route 1. And I have submitted considerable information into your packet. I'll try not to be redundant and go over the same thing. Initially, we have the comprehensive plan, Route 1 commercial area, you'll probably have a copy of that. Luke, I'm sure he has a large-scale copy. And just for a highlight, there's 17 residents, five offices, one office apartment. Obviously, there's the largest lot that was there was McDonald's, which was previously Woodwell Construction. I'm not sure if Luke can provide us with the sewer map, which isn't shown on this comprehensive plan, but as noted in some of my materials, it does bisect that whole area. And kind of the theme of my presentation was that response to the newspaper article that stated it recommended both sides of U.S. Route 1 be treated equally when it comes to siting operating facility. So the point of my discussion kind of highlights a considerable difference between the two sides of the street. And again, similar theme was Roger, Raymond, and Joel Woodwell had considerable review and activity in this involvement, so this present shoreline use has worked well for the community, and obviously the 17 homes, as I've listed, the offices, well-maintained, well- landscaped. And then additionally, if you were to look at the map, this is 29, that has details of lot dimensions in that area. Some are as narrow as 64 feet. And of course, it's shoreline, there's 250-foot setback and a 75-foot setback in the back area for any activity. And so some of the property depths, some of the homes are actually out of the shoreline zone, part of them. But the sewer map will show that that reduces a lot of the available lot sizes. And of course, this was shoreline, it's very steep, and if it wasn't developed, it would classify because of the slope, a lot of it actually would be classified as resource-protected. I certainly don't want my property being resource-protected, it's zoned correctly to me. Quick highlight on one of these notes that I had forwarded to you folks, just a quick thing, is it's an area suitable for residential uses and limited commercial. And obviously, the zones are different across the highway. As I know, there's no sidewalks on our side of the property. And that is some interesting background was when the DOT was trying to upgrade the roads, and obviously we have significantly more traffic than we old days, it seems like more and more cars, but they pursued a theme of trying to reduce the traffic wids, or the highway wids, in order to accommodate these old towns throughout the state. And Bucksport was one of the first to work with Roger, and they had public hearings and were able to reduce the structural size of the highway. So the, instead of the 12-foot lane, 10, 7-foot sidewalks, and the 66-foot right-of-way, it was reduced down so that we only had one sidewalk, and it basically allowed 17 feet, it narrowed the road 17 feet.
Excuse me, narrowed the road or the right-of-way?
Well, the right-of-way is still there, 66 feet, but it did narrow, and another feature of the road was that concrete curbing. And of course, they wanted to put in, you know, the asphalt and you know when the snowplows get that, three, four years later, it's totally disaster. So those concrete blocks or granite blocks are actually set in cement pads, so their structure there is just almost indestructible.
So the answer to my question is the road was narrowed?
The road is narrowed, yep. They narrowed the sidewalk, reduced the breakdown lane, and eliminated the sidewalk on, so in comparison, Verona has a 66-foot project, Bucksport got the, and the DOT came and was very pleased because he thought that this new proposal that came through them would be a lot more susceptible to many other towns. Obviously, you can even think of CSB, it's very narrow, but so, so that made the highway fit our community and also provided, you know, traffic management, which was, you know, that's the DOT's project. So another little highlight, changes in business activities in the ordinance create confusion if you added the restaurants and taverns, since the lots are very small, too short, divided by sewer line, and also the shoreline issue, which is not the case of the opposite side of the highway. So if you change the ordinance, suddenly, you know, you look, the sites don't work, because if you look at this map, the very small, very steep, and that's kind of my This other one I submitted just gives an outline, you know, let's grow a tree, we have rentals, residential, counting offices, real estate, classes, perfect fit. Low impact, those businesses, if they go convert right back to sale residential or another office comes in, it keeps the architecture the same, and if you look at all, many of the offices are very well landscaped, they're moaned, they're green, it just works well. And of course, last meeting, I reported on some of the issues that Luke has to deal with for across the street because of some of the structural problems that we're having with some of those properties. Not all the properties, but some of the, most of the offices are nine-to-five, works well with the residential, as I say, 17 residences, nine-to-five operation, come and go, could be, could have four kids, just as busy, but that's not, you know, that works well. And again, I pointed out that McDonald's came in pre-zoning and obviously took over an existing lot that was heavily developed by, you know, the Woodwell Construction, who knows what's out back, they have the oil trucks and things like that, that happens in the old, old business of truck repair. But, and I guess another point was sometimes a reason was because of a restaurant was that if the village area had a gas station, would you zone the whole village for gas One of those was, I mentioned the sewer line, the frontages. What, I know is, my property line is almost next to that curbing, but if you bring the 66-foot right-of-way, I have a, in those documents show that additionally, if you look at the shoreline map that shows property depths, actually, there's about 17 feet from the actual stake that acts as 66-foot right-of-way. And I have a, an item here shows some of the 66-foot right, actually, the fears would actually bisect the front steps of some of the homes. So the great news, the DOT did a wonderful job, we got the road improved, we got granite curbing and traffic flows, it's fairly quiet, so that's a great improvement. I also included some highlights from zoning issues that towns should deal with, and it just talks about looking at properties for repurposing. Perfect fit, light commercial, residential, back and forth versus what a restaurant or tavern would do, as I mentioned later in some of the things about electrical plumbing, egress, parking. Once a building gets, meets all the state and local codes, the building's not likely repurposed back to residential because of the structural changes. And if a business fails, it's likely to, you know, could remain vacant because it doesn't switch back. So that's one of my points. The whole idea of zoning in general is for the value and enjoyment of the properties. We've had public hearings previously and most of the input was, yes, this seems to work for our neighborhood. And again, another issue comes up is if you look at the number of restaurants in downtown, and it seems like every week we have a lot of interest in the newspapers about the downtown area, that why even locate or zone Route 1 for restaurants and taverns? And if you do read many of the zoning reviews, some of the issues that come up is that towns have discovered that all you do is transfer the financial impact that, from one business to a business out on the strip. And then your in-town businesses struggle and fail, so it just doesn't, you know, the actual having taverns and restaurants there, logically, I feel, has a negative impact on all of our restaurants, you think of them, we've got the Sings, we've got Pizza Joys, we've got the McLeod's, and we've got the little wine shops, all of that could be affected. Just food for thought, but, so I've included a item here showing that 66-foot right-of-way, and you can see how, you know, this one is 20 feet, and here's an illustration where that, front of that property acts as in the 66-foot right-of-way. That's not an issue, but it just shows that if the stake is up here, that, if you look at the bat, say, oh, they got 300 feet, oh, you've got to think of probably 17 feet, then you bisect that with a sewer, and then you look at the steepness, it just doesn't seem to work very well to put, you know, a business center that's going to have and demand lots of parking, et cetera, et cetera. My next photo shows my 121 property, and the, it's an illustration, and this is some photos of the recent sale of the Lucy property, that's just gone down that, and that's the view that we have, so. I've been there for 40 years, it's a wonderful view for residents. I've met with people from, coming in from Florida, California, doing, you know, climate change and stuff, I think you could just ask, that we've got a lot of interest right now in residential, more sold than business sold. And lastly, I guess it's, I'm sure where that goes to. Residential and office workers are more likely to go downtown, shop their businesses, we buy books, puzzles, eat pizzas, ice cream, take our friends to local restaurants, do our banking, go to the movies, have legal work, and some may even have a boat, go to Marina. Now again, not to say the restaurants are bad, but those employees would tend to eat there, again, distracting from the downtown activities. Let's get the officers and the residents in that zone, it works. Due to the shift of consumer spending, can move to the strip area rather than the downtown. I didn't include this handout, I'll pass that out a little bit later. And I guess my last plea is that I did have some photos that I don't need, I'll let them speak for themselves, just for courtesy's. Just some comments, quick comments, try to, have it in record.
You want these photos up?
Well, this is a local tavern.
What does that have to do with the zoning where we're at?
Well, the point would be is that that activity in our neighborhood just shows that-
That activity takes place no matter where you're at?
Well, not in the neighborhood, if it was, oh, my point was if you read my little-
I read that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this is-
But changing the zone doesn't mean this is going to happen, I mean, that's, I get, I mean, these lots, if they're not suitable for a restaurant, somebody's not going to put it there.
Exactly.
But if there is, you know, for instance, the Lucy lot, I mean, that is, that has the spirit for it to do something, if somebody wanted to.
Well, that's all this residential.
I hear you, but that is possible to do something.
Well, if you're looking, again, the zone presently is trying to keep with the nature of the neighborhood and the impact of, obviously McDonald's is, has done a very good job, you notice the property's all fenced in, it was a large lot, they managed, they do the landscaping, but I'm just saying the other properties are very narrow and small and they are residential, and it's significant change, so I, you do have all of, presently the, across the, the other zone is all zoned for that type of activity, very large lots, very big depths. And if some of those properties do become cleared, which may potentially happen, it would be, those sites work well, they have lots of room for parking, they have the setbacks, they have, you know, accommodations for avoiding streetlight, you know, traffic, and then the hours of operation and peak operations. Now, when people go to the legal office, you know, it's kind of a steady traffic all day, but restaurants and taverns have peak hours and if they're open in the evenings, significantly impact on residential neighborhoods, so that's, I just feel that the zone is correctly zoned as it is now, and that's my, the point of my presentation. It seems to be working.
So you feel that if a business was right across the street from your house, it would be a better location, for what reason? Because that's more-
Well, for example, I live directly across from Family Dollar.
Yes, I know you do.
And there's also a sub-shop there. They have, they set the parking lot, you know, considerable depth, it's a large parking. We do have some issues, as I pointed out, the fact that they didn't meet all the requirements of the original plan, and the signage on the roadwork is, you know, hopefully gets improved, I had highlighted those issues. But as a business itself, it has a, you know, setback, we put TIF money, except, you know, I included an article to show, I didn't want to make sure I misspoke, but I highlighted the article that shows that the TIF money for the Hillside Park, which doesn't, you know, has been improved, but was better- which doesn't, you know, has been improved, but with better parking lot arrows and signage, that has a lot better visibility. There's a lot of confusion there at that entrance right now because of, you know, it's not, it's not done like it is down at the gateway and at, you know, all of those facilities have good road markings. So that was my complaint at the last meeting. But the business itself, that worked well there. They have good depth. They've got a nice road that we built for them to use. And that activity seems to fit. But it certainly wouldn't fit in a sixty-four foot lot across the street. So, you know, why have the zone changed? And if someone did come in with the impact, as I mentioned last night, was that it does have a significant impact on the structure. Oh, one last note. I was thinking about the property next to the Colonel Buck monument. Whoever owns that property, they have done a wonderful job. It fits. You've got that little mystery Halloween time, they decorate that all. I mean, that's what Bucksport's all about. We, you've got nice structures. Let's, let's get new properties, new development in the right location, but let's not destroy our homes and tax base. Phyllis and I have been there for forty years. The previous couple was there for forty. I think a member of the audience here has been along the, as a neighbor, forty-four years. Possibly he has something to say, but that's, that's my presentation. I hope, hope that will encourage you to leave the ordinance as, as is.
Thank you.
I would just say that not all restaurants are McDonald's. We've had multiple people approach us about putting something there that would be very small. If you actually look at Subway and not Family Dollar, Subway only needs two or three parking spaces. You look at most Subways, they don't have huge parking lots. So something like that wouldn't need a monstrous lot like a full-fledged restaurant. I think it makes sense to allow the developer to look at the lot, and maybe they buy multiple lots and combine them. I don't think it's right for us to limit what a developer can do. If they can make it work on the lot and it meets the requirements of the ordinance and the planning board approves it, then why should we, why should we block it? Obviously, if they can't make their restaurant fit between the sewer line and the road setbacks, then it's not, why would they even try? So.
Thanks.
Luke, I'm looking right at a sign behind you that says Town of Bucksport. Certified Business Fender.
That's what I'm trying to do. I had to turn all those people away because, because of the way the ordinance is written now.
Yep.
Sir?
My name's Ian Craven. I live on 101 U.S. Route One. Family's been there since nineteen seventy-eight. It's a residential area, light use. What is the big rush to want to change? What is the rush? I've been here. We've had open sewers. The waterfront stunk. You wouldn't want to be there with clean water, clean air access. Therefore, the area has turned into a very nice area. What is the big rush to change the zoning? You have commercial space available on the other side of the road. Is it not just a safety issue? Is there that much money pushing to turn this into a development? Do you want to be a Miracle Mile like Brewer or wherever? Is that what you want? It's not what I want. It's not what I came to Bucksport for. I just want to know, why do you want to change the zoning?
I think Luke just spoke to it, please.
You've got the other side of the street.
Yep.
I myself have never been a fan of one side of the street does this, one side does this. That's me personally. If a street's owned, commercial, it should be both sides.
So you want a Miracle Mile pavement? Businesses splattered everywhere? Is that what you want?
Realistically, I think we know that's not going to happen.
It could easily.
But I think you'd fan us if somebody wants to develop one of those properties. If they can make it work, they are limited.
Yeah, it is. I understand there are different points of view. So I've been here a long time. And to see something, a big push to change something? We're limited to what we can do on the land. Because we've got two hundred, we've got the shoreline zoning. That affects what we can do. You've got a sewer system, you can't expand your house.
Right. But whoever developed these lots would have those same restrictions. So, I mean, if they could make it work, that would be up to them. The burden's on them.
What's the proposal first before you start changing things? Are there open proposals to change?
There were, but I had to deny them.
Would it be of interest to the property owners in the areas to know what's going on?
Well, they would during the process if it was allowed.
I didn't even know about this.
Because it wasn't allowed.
It said Section K. I didn't know what Section K was.
Well, it's, and again, I can't, I can't apologize for that. It's been advertised and we've talked about it, we've been talking about it for quite a while.
Yeah, Section K. Doesn't mean anything to me.
Okay.
And I've been employee of town here for sixteen years before I retired. That's just my feeling about why I'd want to change things.
Thank you. Any other questions? So we have changes to the land use ordinance, Section K. I'm just going to go down through them. The quick overview of the changes, there's nine of them. Took marijuana stores off Main Street. They would not be allowed anyway due to the proximity to the waterfront, which is a safe zone. Two is added marijuana stores for both medical and adult use, has allowed in the C1 and R1S zone, which is either side of U.S. Route One. Added language to regulate performance standards of marijuana establishments. Allowed indoor marijuana cultivation facilities in the R1, C1, C2, C3, ID, and RT15 zones. Allowed marijuana production facilities in the C3 and ID zones. Allowed marijuana testing facilities in the C3 and ID zones. Removed the language that required businesses in the R1S zone to look residential. Allowed restaurants and taverns to be, to be allowed uses in the R1S zone. And relocated the DT zone boundary to include the properties on the north side of Franklin Street between Central Street and Elm Street. Does that capture the overview, Luke?
Just reminded you to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I was just, that was all part of the public hearing. I wanted to make sure that that was read into the record. Yep, thank you. Comments, last comments? You? No? Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Next is discussion items not on the agenda for the council and the public. Public have anything that's not on the agenda?
Don't worry, no marijuana stuff now. That's closed.
Excuse me. The question I have is, I read the paper about the animal shelter coming along. It's, I think, last town council meeting, there was talk about going out to get estimates and so forth. But from what I had recently heard is, we're now up to about twelve towns that participate in animal control worries about, and some of them are out past Hampden. So as an example, if we were going to do something about the animal control shelter and we relocate, rebuild to accommodate the additional input of animals that are coming in, and it comes out at, say, three hundred thousand dollars, just to do the simple math. And we have twelve towns, or ten towns, or whatever it's going to be. Are we going to divide that by, equally, by all twelve towns? And therefore Bucksport's only portion for the taxpayers will be thirty-something thousand dollars? Or is the town of Bucksport and the taxpayers going to build the facility and collect some sort of a fee?
That's, that's the answer.
Okay. So, but in order to go with the three hundred thousand dollars, well, what's it really going to cost the taxpayer in the end? Say it comes to three hundred thousand dollars and.
I don't want to talk in hypothetical zone, Paul, because it's not throwing numbers out, and then I'm held accountable to put that number and all of a sudden it doesn't happen.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this. If it comes to a high number like that, will it have to go out to the town to vote on in order to go forward?
Yes.
Okay. So Plan B. I also read in the paper that the animal control officer right now could use a workspace because of paperwork that has to be done, and they're looking for additional dry storage. The other day on TV, they're advertising main trailer up here. There's a, small trailers, they're, they're construction trailers. They're usually put on job sites when a construction project is coming along and so forth. Within that trailer, you have a desk, a workspace, and then usually they store parts for the site, or in this case, could be used for dry storage. So why not, until we can move forward on this, accommodate the animal control officer by either buying or leasing a small twenty-foot trailer? Gives the animal control officer and the team of people that she has a place to do their paperwork and accommodate them with the dry storage until things move along with the other thing. Anyway, I'm done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I feel like rich tonight.
Don't say that.
I, I kind of agree with what he was saying. But yes, the fees for what we charge the other towns is something that I do think we should look at and review whether we're charging.
Proper.
Enough. I'm not saying we need to gouge them, but, you know, it does cost a certain amount and it's going up.
I've thought the same thing for a long time.
To house and feed those animals.
Especially if we're going to look at, at a new building.
And we just took her on as a full-time employee, and we need to pay for that.
I don't, I don't disagree with you.
So I am working on the fee schedule updates for all sorts of things. For this marijuana stuff, for licensing, for the building fees. They haven't changed since early nineties. So anyways, I just think that's something we need to look at. So we are being fair.
Thank you. Maybe I also have anything not on the agenda?
Go ahead. Just want to note that nomination papers are available for two town council seats, one school board seat. They are due by September eighth. They can be picked up at the town office on normal business hours.
Case you can hear the town clerk. Nomination papers for two town council seats and one IRSU twenty-five seat. And they can be picked up at the town office and have to be turned in by September eighth at end of business. Thank you. Richard?
Really quickly, I got the last easement for the wall project. So two walls on U.S. Route One. The property that Mr. Daniels was speaking about earlier, the nice one on the side, we've got that one. We've got the Johnson House further up on the same side of the road. And then we have three properties on Central Street, fifteen, thirty-five, and thirty-nine. Those five properties will get the new walls this year. Bids will close August seventeenth, and we'll come to the council seeking approval at that point, at the next council meeting, which would be, I believe, August twenty-fifth, I believe, will be the next council meeting for approval to move forward. Also, I'd like to thank Harbor Master Ormsby and Bill Stevenson. A couple of Friday nights ago, we had an incident on a river where there was a boat taking on water, and they acted professionally. They came out, they were able to bring the family in, bring a down boat in and out of the harbor. So let you know, I was aboard on that trip to see how that went down, and they did a great job. So kudos to our group.
Thank you. Luke, can you give us an update of, and maybe Sue can help, on what we've talked about for the last couple of times, some of these abandoned buildings, some of these things like the one at Mount Olive Heights, and some of these other places that we've, we either have or are in the process of getting, and where we stand with these things, or where, to the point that we've heard here the last couple of meetings about some of these dilapidated buildings. I know you've talked about making that a priority to work on those, but some of the ones that we already know of that are in the pipeline, do we have updates or anything?
I'll start, because the two most visible are Mount Olive Heights, where we were waiting for USDA to release the thirty-two thousand dollar interest penalty so that that could be taken down, the property, the lot sold, and move along without the property owner having that thirty-two thousand dollar interest.
Staring over.
Yeah, still on her behalf. And that's, I have a string of emails, as long as I am tall, with the federal government and their process. That's one. The other one, the eviction process on eighteen sixty, I think it's eighteen sixty-one.
State Rule Forty-Six.
State Rule Forty-Six is somewhat like crawling through broken glass, but is in process. I also will have for you, either at the next council meeting or the one after that, the list of foreclosures that are either second properties, they're currently empty, or they're land only, in order for the council to make a decision to put them out to bid. Because we have, I gave the list to, Enterprise asked me for that information, for those that were in foreclosure, that were not in repayment or, and were not primary residences where, you know, people were in repayment on foreclosures, which we have, we have, if someone's in repayment.
What?
But it's a second property or it's an empty property, which we have a number of, and they're in foreclosure with the town, then you'll make a decision on whether or not those get put out to bid, the same way we did for those of you who were on the board back in two thousand fifteen or sixteen. There was a list of properties that was in this same situation. So that's, then the next month, you'll see that, the list of what those properties are anyway.
Great, thanks. I think that, that's what I'm asking. Thanks, Luke.
Can I follow up on that question, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'm just curious what, in a hypothetical situation, hearing what you said a moment ago, Mr. Mayor, about hypothetical.
What are our options?
I know. What are our options at, at Mount Olive Heights right now if we wanted to take action? Because I mean, I'm preaching to the choir here, but this has been a while now.
If the town wanted to just move forward, the property's in foreclosure, you could send a letter that says, you've got thirty days to pay everything that's due, or else we could, once that's done, if you voted to do this, to actually complete this foreclosure, you could have the property cleaned up and you could sell it. As I said, the only reason we haven't is that outstanding penalty on a property owner who's in a distressed position to start with is something that there's then no way out of for that property owner. And I.
I'll tell you, we talked about it, Paul, just so you know, and we sort of are going through the process of waiting. I don't disagree that we've waited quite a while. And maybe when Sue brings this list in a month or so, we will have a little more action. But if not, maybe it is time to take action. Because it has been two years, probably.
Three.
Three?
Yeah, and I commend the town manager for considering. Yeah, and I commend the town manager for considering the state that this would leave the property owner, and I don't, please don't let me convey otherwise, 'cause I don't mean to, but there is a point.
Yep.
And, you know, that lot, and I don't mean to be crass about it, you know, it's gone now, because it's summertime and it's so overgrown, but it'll reappear this fall, and, 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 yeah, at what point?
Actually, I drove by before I came down, and I was just kinda curious, and that's why I wanted to talk about it. So, maybe, 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 Paul, if it's okay, if we wait till we get that...
Sure, absolutely.
And then we'll see if we get any more...
I was just curious, like, if we did, if we were gonna take a different tack, what would our options be? I thought I knew them, but I don't like to think I know things, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
My name is Luanne Lawson, I live at 258 US Route 1, and I've just come to ask why a solar company, please bear with me, I'm not a very good speaker. A solar company had contacted you two months ago about possibly putting a solar farm on my farm. And I understand that, number one, they didn't go to the planning board for it, and I'm not sure why that happened. Maybe they just didn't know the procedure, as I don't. But I would like to say that that farm has been in my family for 200 years. We've paid taxes on it for 200 years, and I don't understand why we, I, and my family members can't use the land as we feel fit to do. We're zoned, I believe, I know I'm in farmland, but the fields, and all the forest land is in forest land. The solar company would be responsible for the back taxes on the amount of land that would come out for forestry. So, you guys would be making more money than you're offering me right now for taxes, because you'd have 20 acres that would be in commercial instead of, huh, forest land, I should say. The site won't be able to be seen from the road, which is a lot more than I can say for the water district site. I often wondered why they didn't put shrubs around there, make it look a little better. And I just feel like it's my land, I should be able to do what I want on it. You know, it's, it's a matter of, it's coming down to the point where I'm getting too old to work the farm the way I need to, and the extra cash would, to be honest with you, would be quite beneficial for me, especially with the taxes going up, as they are, and everything else happening. And I just kinda wanted to look each one of you in the eye and have you tell me why you were against it.
I'll start. It's not a zone, it's not a zone for that type of business, and we've made a decision, I made a decision and the rest of the council, that we aren't willing to change the zones for that type of use. And we've done it on several occasions in town, when folks have come for solar farms. That's not a, that's not a, it's not a proper use for that area.
Why isn't it a proper use for that area?
It's just the way that it's zoned. The way that the zoning is written for solar farms are only allowed in the industrial zones, is that right, Luke? So, and that, that decision was made six, seven years ago, when we went over zoning rules.
I just don't understand. I paid taxes on that land for...
Luanne, three or four solar companies ago, they told us that there was no room left on the grid for solar power. I believe, am I correct in saying that?
There, I think when Ameresco came, they said that the, when we were going, looked at doing solar at the landfill, the, we were told by bidders that there was, the substation here didn't have sufficient capacity to do much more in terms of hooking things into that substation that were power-wise, and that, this most recent one said that they're, that if they got to do it, that nobody else could, I think, is what, which limits any other kind of activity using that substation.
Right. And it's been, it's been the problem for years and years, that there is no place to put the amount of power that they're going to produce there. There's no place to put that on the grid anywhere. They could pipe it out to New York, I suppose, or Washington State, I don't know where they could pipe to, but it's not something that's really needed. And, like he said, company after company comes in here. This company that you're dealing with, they told us that they would not own the, the power, the grid, the solar array. They wouldn't own it, they would sell it as soon as they got done...
Correct.
Building it. Or it just, it seems like, you know, what are we gonna have, a big chunk of land here in Bucksport that's gonna be covered with solar panels and not being used? That's just the way I'm looking at it.
So, what happens to that chunk of land if I can't afford to pay the taxes and...
Is your way of the tax policy, tax protection increases?
I didn't hear what he said.
Oh, the one we talked about last time, the one that you didn't have any answers on yet, but...
The freezing of the taxes for folks.
The one that free, well, anyone over 65 who's had a homestead exemption, or who's had a homestead, and don't have to have filed for homestead, you have to have owned property in Maine at some point for 10 years, you're over 65. It freezes your taxes at what they would be as of Septem, April 1, 2022. The application has to be in by December 1st, and it affects the tax bill you would get for '23, '24. There's no income requirement assessed at it. If someone has a home here that's valued at $100,000, and they're paying $1,695 a year in taxes, and it's frozen, if they go buy a $300,000 house in another town, they're still gonna pay $1,695, and everybody else is gonna make up the difference. That's what this program is. It freezes it at, at what it is as of this tax bill right now, and the taxpayers of Maine make up the difference for any increase, and the increase can be caught, if someone doubled the size of their house, that doubling would be paid by the taxpayers. If somebody, if the mill rate goes up, the difference is paid for by others. But right now, there's not even a way for software systems, or the kind of, where did somebody live for 10 years, to qualify for this? It could be, there's no, from 1980 on, or from 1960, there's 10 years and you're 65. The intent was good, the intent was good, but the application is gonna be extremely difficult, and my fear is that people see that it's gonna be a big thing, and if some, if this had been in place in Bucksport for the past seven years, nobody would have seen any change, because our mill rate didn't change, and unless you did something value-wise, it would not have, it would have not have made a difference. What it would do is freeze your taxes where they are right now, so it protects you from any increase, but it doesn't roll them back. It doesn't, it starts here, and whatever happens after that is, is what that program is. There is another program where people can apply, and there is an income component to this one, where it, the taxes are paid by the state, but it creates a lien on a property to the state of Maine, that at the time someone sells or passes away gets satisfied, but it, it pays taxes for seniors that are in, you know, over, under a certain income level that, but it, as I said, it creates a lien that is satisfied upon death or sale. That's another one, that's a program that the state has for...
It's like a deferred property tax type of thing.
That's, but that, those are the two, other than the circuit breaker program, which is when you file your income tax, and the homestead, which is the $20,000, $23,750, I think it is right now, because we're not 100%, that of value of the property that's not taxed, that's another state program. That's, those are the current programs that are available, and the one that protects, that freezes things, has to be applied for by December.
Luanne, did you, did you sell that piece of property to those?
No, no, it's not to be sold, it's to be, it's going to be leased.
Leased.
Right. However, they...
And who will be leasing it? The people that are building this array?
The borough, yes. And they, they would be responsible for the back taxes, that would make up the difference from what I paid from...
And they're gonna continue to lease it from you until...
For, you know, a certain, well...
Even though their intent is to sell it as soon as they get it built?
Correct.
They're gonna sell the lease?
So, I just don't see where there's a problem. It's not gonna be seen from the road aesthetically. Let's face it, you know, there's no place to sell pulpwood anymore, so what difference is, some of those trees die, they come out. Access-wise, they can access through my driveway, so they're not gonna be causing any problems in the fields and swamps. To me, it's, I don't know, I'm a US citizen. We pay taxes on, on land for 200 years, as long as it's not causing, I don't wanna say this, as long as it's not ugly-looking. Why are you so concerned? Yes, you said I'm not zoned commercial, but 1980-something, a council member came to my dad and said, "Ben, you need to get your land into farmland and forest land, because otherwise, that front field is gonna be zoned commercial, and you're gonna be taxed commercially." So, since the 80s, it's been in farmland and in forest land. Now, you're saying to me, because it's not commercially taxed, so...
It's not commerc, it's, it's not, it's industrial.
It's commercially zoned, industrial zoned. But technically, if you say it's a solar farm, it is fine. I'm fine there.
Not, not, and again, we have, we have rules that we go by, too, and that's what we have to operate under, and again, the decision was made not to change that zone.
And what would it take to change that zone? Public hearing, public speaking?
We had public hearings already on it. I don't know if they, I mean, we've had the conversation, and the way, and again, I'm not speaking for the council, but we voted on three or four of these not to change the zoning that we've had in town, for, for things like that. So, if, if they wanna, you know, apply and put the, put the work back, I don't, I don't know if it's worth it. I can't, again, I'm not speaking for everybody.
What's the general consensus?
I don't, I don't think that's a fair question. You can't, you can't, you can't ask that question.
I can't ask them to look me in the eye and say, "I'm sorry, but the land that you've had all those years, we're gonna tell you what you can and can't do with it."
But it's always been that way. You, you've always had a, a land use of some type that you, what you couldn't, couldn't do.
Well, maybe I'll just have to start raising hogs and put them in the front field, and then I don't have to worry about the rest of them. At this point, I'm not causing you any problems. Solar's not gonna cause any problems. We need to talk about how to get this resolved. It's, it's another business coming to town, really. Gives you more tax money.
Have the sales in her area affected their property? In the zoning area, have sales touched that property, you know, in protected cases? Which I know, I just, but it does also offer some...
It's in protected...
It's, it's protected.
It's, it's in the lowest tax capacity that we have, because it's in agricultural and forestry, so it's not paying full value taxes now for its...
Well, maybe I need to come back with somebody who can speak better than myself, and see about it.
You spoke fine, you did, I just, there's a process that, when they, when they, when the folks showed up from the, from the solar farm, it wasn't a process that we were willing to change.
So, if I come to the planning board, they can talk about possibly changing things? How does this work?
The reason that the planning board didn't hear the application was because we knew that it wasn't zoned for that. So, the only way that it could get approved was if the council approved a contract zone. And since the council indicated that they didn't wanna do that, there was no reason for the planning board to proceed with hearing the application, because the planning board can approve it, much like they did the first one with Ameresco, and when it gets to the council, they have to approve a contract zone, and they said they didn't wanna do that. So, that's why we did repeat our planning board.
I'm just, I'm just dumbfounded. I just can't believe that. Paying, paying the town all these years for that land, and then you're telling me what I can't do with it. Just, you know, go to bed and think about it tonight, people. It's been, I wanna keep that land in my family. And, you know, there's no mills to send pulpwood to anymore. There's no trees to be cut for, Christmas trees. You're really putting me in, in a predicament where I think there's something that could, could help. Maybe you reconsider rezoning that area? Talk it over at least, please, and give it another shot. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Anybody from the council, anything?
I have.
Yep.
I have a piece of land that's now occupied by a road. Used to be called, or is called, the Gully Road, or Gully's Road. Now, in the 80s, when my brother built a house up on the hill behind where I live, the town, rather than doing work on the road, abandoned it. And they only abandoned my end of the road, Jacoboff Pond, and it never has been abandoned, as far as I know, or at least it wasn't at that time. I've got a neighbor who has a camp down on Thurston's Pond. Now, he, when he bought that property and built that camp, he was told by the owner that sold it to him, that he was to use the Jacoboff Pond end of the road to come in and take the road that they had built to go down the edge of the pond. I don't know if you're familiar with that area or not, but that road that they built was supposed to be the access for those camps. Well, they continued the road on down till it hit the Griss Mill Road at the bottom corner of my property, or close to the corner where the Griss Mill Road goes into my property. And this guy has decided, now that the people who bought the damn lot on the pond have improved that road to some degree, he's decided that he's gonna be able to access his camp across my fields and down through on the road as it exists at this time. He, he went for quite a few years using the other end to get to his camp. He lives out in the neighborhood, but he's never asked my permission across my property. He just came to the town and said, "Is there a right of way through this?" Well, he was told here that, yes, the right of way exists. Well, I looked up the information on it in the state rules and regulations on abandoned roads. Went up to the town, and the landowners that have bought that road, which he doesn't, he doesn't abut it, he lives down on the pond, he has his camp on the pond. The landowners who have bought the road have the right to shut that road off the right of way, regardless of what the town says. Well, at this point, the town is dictating what can be done on my property. That guy can cross my property uninterrupted, and I don't want him crossing... guy can cross my property uninterrupted, and I don't want him crossing my property because he can consume my yard at a little bit higher rate than I just assumed anybody was driving through. So I'd like to see something done about shutting off the right of way through there, if that's possible. I don't, I don't see in the ordinance is that it says that it can't be done, because the road has been abandoned, and it's been many years. My grandfather bought the place in '45, and there never was any work done on that road, other than people that were accessing their properties or cutting wood on somebody else's property down there, or whatever, that's how it was used. In fact, when my, my land got cut, the lower end of my land harvested, him and another fellow come down and, and did the harvesting of the wood down a little part of my property, they came in through the Jacobus Pond end and came down through by those camps, down to the Grist Mill Road, and used the Grist Mill Road, went on to my property, cut the wood. He didn't come down and through my yard or ask permission, or, he never has asked permission, he just blows by there.
Okay.
And he's complaining to the town, and I'd like to, if the town is gonna dictate that, that road can be used, I'd like them to remedy that here.
Yeah, I, I see that for our next council meeting, we have a discontinued road discussion, I assume that's what this is, or something to do with that?
I think it was in-
Regulatory review, the reason I put this on the agenda, Jim, so regulatory review could look at, in 1981, when the town took action to abandon that road, it didn't specify that it was giving up the public right of way across it, and anything that was abandoned after 1965 required, in the abandonment language, if they were gonna get rid of the public right of way across it, to specifically state that in the discontinuance, and this didn't. It happened on July 9, 1981, and the language that the board at that time adopted was to abandon it, but it didn't say, "And give up the public right of way across it." So this one is one of the worst, because it goes right through his yard, but, but it's not the only one that, that, that's in a similar situation, and so what I put is, so regulatory review could review these, and the council could make decisions on entity, the, some of these abandoned roads that the town has no interest in. I mean, there's not, we have Upper Long Pond Road, which has Great Pond Mountain Trust, which has trails up there, the, giving up a public right of way on that would not make any sense, given the purpose, but there are some that serve only a, a very few people, like this one, from one end of one side, and the others generally from the other, but since this has occurred, that if we looked at this, we could, the council could look to address these issues, and regulatory review on the 11th is what I was asking.
Yes, did you, did you find anything on the Grist Mill Road?
I haven't, I, I have asked Jay to get me all the information he has on all of these, along with what we have in our road book, which is, lists all that stuff, and we'll bring all those to that meeting in order to look at that, was the goal.
The Grist Mill Road originally came from, I think it came from down where Dan Morrison had the house right beside the stream down there-
Okay.
On 46, and came up through the hills, and then come up through that short section of the church road, then on to Woods Common and through-
Upper Road.
I think it's stub zones of land now that, that's there. But that road ran all the way from there, right straight through and hit the Gully Road, crossed that, and then continues on down, and it hit where the dam lot is on Thurston's Farm, where the Grist Mill stood years ago. And I don't know if that road's been abandoned or not, or if that's a second-
Okay.
Second road that he has to use.
But it looks like if we can get the information on these, the council has the ability to, I would say, write something that should have been written 41 years ago.
Yeah, if you could just take the right of way out of there, the public right of way, I'd be happy.
Okay.
And if not, I can go to the landowners that, that do abut that road, and if they're all in agreement, that can be shut off.
Shut off that way, okay. So if you're okay, then we'll bring it to the regulatory review at our next meeting-
Yes, sir.
And have, and have all that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I certainly have an interest in that, too, because I'm older than you.
Okay, so there'll be a committee meeting, August 11th at 6 o'clock, two Thursdays from today.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I just set that for 6 o'clock, in case anybody asks. All right, no other committee meetings?
Go ahead, you go first.
No, go ahead, Rich.
I was gonna ask if we could have an infrastructure meeting for the tennis court.
And the skate park wants one, two.
There's a lot to cover in an hour.
Yeah.
Starting at 5:30 instead of 6?
Well, regulatory review is, is, is the one, and infrastructure is what you're talking about?
Infrastructure, yeah.
Skate park and tennis court.
I'll ask, I don't know if I'm gonna, I may, I may not be here on the 11th, so I'm gonna leave you guys to your devices, if you start at 5 o'clock with, with infrastructure.
We did one from 5 to 6 and one from 6 to 7, that would, if we could do it.
Yeah, okay. That work? So 5 o'clock, infrastructure, 6 o'clock, regulatory review, August 11th, 10-4. Anything else, Rich? You, you jumped up and down there, I wanna make sure I got, got every-
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Next is adjournment.
Would you adjourn?
Second. Call a favor? Thank you.